I'd like to call this January 9th, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I make note that we do have a quorum tonight. We have seven of seven members. If everybody can stand, put the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. Mr. Chairman Supervisor Miles did the invocation first of all by the pledge.
Let us pray. Almighty God, loving Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the sunshine and we thank you for the rain. We thank you for those dark days that teach us to appreciate the light that you give us each and every day. We appreciate you giving us good health and improved health and we thank you for giving, for getting us here safely and we pray that you get us to our homes safely. We also pray for our armed soldiers, those who are fighting for liberty across the globe. And we ask that all of our actions be done according to thy will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And because this is our first meeting of the 2023 year, our first item of business is election of a chairman. In our bylaws, we've gone by the rotation. So in the next order of rotation is Supervisor Chambers. She's scheduled to be chairman for the year 2023. I would entertain a motion to nominate Supervisor Chambers as chairman for 2023.
Mr. Carter, I would move to nominate Supervisor Chambers for the calendar year 2023 Chairman of the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors.
Second. We have a motion by Supervisor Miles, talking about Supervisor Allen. All in favor? Oh, we got the voting machine. That passes unanimously. All right. I will congratulate Supervisor Chambers on being chairman for the upcoming year.
Next on our list would be the confirmation of vice chairman.
Don't move. Second.
Call for the vote. Seven yes. Next would be the approval of agenda.
I'd so move, Mr. Chairman, that the agenda be approved as presented.
The motion, the second agenda be approved as presented. Are you ready to vote? Seven yes. And next would be the approval of amendments. Motion, second, motion by Supervisor Davis, talking by Supervisor Gilliam, the amendments be approved. Are you ready to vote? Seven yes. The next, H, be the approval of claims. The motion, the second, motion by Supervisor Brunt, talking by Supervisor Allen, that the amendments be approved. Ready to vote? Seven yes. The next would be the approval of claims.
I'd make a motion that the claims be agreed to, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Miles, talking by Supervisor Gilliam, that the claims be approved. Are you ready to vote?
This, you just went by the claims. This is the bylaws and the rules.
Okay, well, I would make a motion.
Bylaws and rules, I'm sorry.
Yes, I move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the bylaws and rules of procedure as presented, sir.
The motion is second, that we approve the bylaws and rules as procedure. Are you ready to vote? Now we come down to item J, the announcements, the announcements. Here, now we move on to public comments. Then the public comments at this time.
Yes, we have 13. First one is Santoshia Young, District 5, and Jerry Sackett will be next.
Hello, my name is Santoshia Young and I am here tonight with my daughter, Gracie. We live at 500 Unity Place, Buckingham, and we are in District 5. Thank you, Mr. Bryant, for meeting with us this past week and proposing the four people we have suggested as representatives on the gold, on the county gold mining committee. Every month, Gracie and I come here to speak to you, as inconvenient as it is, because her bedtime is 6:15. But I want you to put a face to who exactly it is that I'm asking you to protect. Some of you may not like babies and that's okay. But like it or not, we need the younger generation. The older we get, the more we need them, even if it is just to repair our car or fill our grocery shelves with food. But some of you up there are fathers and maybe even grandfathers. Do you remember the first time you laid your eyes on their adorable little faces? How long was it before you knew that you would do anything to protect them? Was it instant or did it grow with time? We are calling for you to protect them and all other human beings that live in this beautiful Buckingham County so that we can all live, laugh, love, and grow. I know you have made the decision already, but I think it's a mistake that all four of our suggested residents were not confirmed for the county gold mining committee. Each one is an important player and has a wealth of knowledge that will help to make this work for each of us. What we are dealing with requires specialized knowledge and diverse thinking. Please reconsider letting them help you to navigate this. This is too big for only one resident to assist. Time is of the essence. As you know, election is in November. Some of you may stay, some of you may go. Either way, think about the legacy that you will be leaving behind by making such an important stance to protect the people you have promised to serve. Think about the example you will be making to other counties in the state and even country. When you go home tonight, look at the faces of your children and grandchildren and ask yourself, "Am I doing everything I can to protect them?" Deep down, you will know that answer. And you will know what you need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jerry Sackett, District 5, and Reverend Stephen Fisk will be next.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. My name is Jerry Sackett. I live in the 5th District. I'm going to hit the history button again. In the past meetings, I've brought up the mining operations in Leadville, Colorado, which resulted in, in a span of over 162 years because gold was first discovered there in 1860. And what I want to point out is how long it took the authorities to respond once they realized there was a problem. In 1904, mental deficiencies in the children of that town were recognized. Although the doctors assumed they were temporary and likely to resolve if the child was taken out of the environment. But that was 44 years, already after the mine had been in operation. In 1943, these problems were reiterated and the mental deficiencies were judged to be long-term. And that was 39 years after they were first reported. So this is just, it goes on and on, you know, that it took, from the time that the EPA was founded in 1970, it still just takes a tremendous amount of time. Leadville in 1983 was designated a superfund cleanup site. Now, at the present, they report substantial remediation of the quality of the water in the Arkansas River, which is downstream from Leadville. But that's 119 years after the mine was founded. So all I'm saying here is that if we listen to the lessons of history and act now to pass ordinances that are going to protect ourselves and our family. But if we go into delay and then the people involved change, it's just, you know, if we can act quick to throw some logs in the road that anyone wanting to come into this county to do something gives us the right to say whether they can or not. Please let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Reverend Stephen Fisk, District 5, and Kendah Honeman will be next.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening to all of you and all stakeholders. Good evening to all of you. And thank you for your care and your concern and being here. I'm new. I just moved here with my family. And we had 10 people over the Christmas holiday and they all brought business to this community. And I really love it here. I'm happy to be here. But I am very concerned. I'm very concerned about the way this earth of ours is treated. And I just want to bring up a few reminders. Since Rachel Carson's Silent Spring Book exposed the deadly consequences of DDT. Since the disastrous Santa Barbara oil spill. Since Ohio's Cuyahoga River caught fire. Can you imagine such a thing? Since Love Canal, where toxic chemicals oozed out of the ground during a wet spring. Since the Three Mile Island partial nuclear meltdown. Since the Flint, Michigan water crisis. And since a strong coalition of local activists were successful in sending back the attempts by Dominion and Duke Oil to cross our county with the Atlantic Coast Pipeline. All these incidents have one thing in common. They were promoted by corporate interests and they were promoted also and supported by government interests. And they all brought toxic results to the environment and to the health and welfare of the citizens of those communities. And we have this issue before us now. So I implore you, I implore you, and by God's grace, we are also implored, to take care of the land, the air, and the water of this beautiful earth with which we are all blessed. So I implore you all to be the caretaker, to be the ones who stand up to protect our environment and protect the health of this community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Kendah Honeman, District 5, and Heidi Berto will be next.
Good evening. Kendah Honeman, District 5, Supervisor Bryant's district. I live on Ramalane. I attended the first meeting that you had tonight at 4:30 for the gold committee. And I'm really glad you've started that. And I do agree that time is of the essence, that we can't stand to wait until after something bad happens here and then try to clean it up. So I'm really grateful that it appears the committee will be working in a really timely manner. I had sent a letter to the editor of the Farmville Herald last week that was printed about the committee makeup. And Supervisor Bryant had originally thought we could have four of the public on that meeting, in that committee. And then he was told that no, it could only be one. So there'll be two supervisors and one public representative. We have more than one person who's been pretty educated here in the county about this issue and can bring different perspectives to it. I think it would be really wise to have more than one if you end up with one. I trust that they'll be able to do a good job and hopefully speak for more than just themselves. I didn't understand in the conversation at that meeting about, talking about the Dillon Rule versus the Home Rule. I'm not sure the Home Rule plays into this at all, but it would be nice to have clarification about that. And I guess, are you going to have the meetings open to the public, each one, each month? Okay, so the third Monday of each month, you're having meetings. So I hope the public hears that and will attend and find out what the progress is. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Heidi Berto, District 5, and Chad Obol will be next.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Divya Berto and I live in District 5. 4:30, third Mondays, by the way. The state-funded study on the impacts of gold mining is final and it concluded what we already know, that Virginia is not for commercial gold mining. It's for lovers. You have at the ready a solution to the potential environmental and economic devastation this industry would bring, an already well-thought-out rights space ordinance. We argue that the land use ordinance alone has no teeth. Together, they are strong deterrents to the industry setting up camp in our county. So we understand you want only one public participant on the gold mining committee. But we were looking forward to you confirming all four Buckingham informed and concerned residents tonight. And that would have included Kendah Honeman, Jerry Sackett, Pete Kapachinsky, and myself. Jiva Abate resigned when he understood that he was the only public participant. He was expecting to be part of a large committee. We encourage more input, not less. And we work better as a team. This is a big deal. I have, I've really not heard good reasons for limiting the addition of public participants. Mr. Miles, I believe you are proud of the litter committee that includes seven residents, each from a district. Litter is important, but it's, it does not have the gravity nor the impact of gold mining. Why do you want to limit inclusion? You were elected to represent us and to listen to us. Democracy is the best way to serve the county. Letting in metallic mining will be counter to growing the county. Show of hands. Who wants to move to a poisoned community? For those who think there is limited, that this is limited to District 5, think again. Aston Bay wrote on their website that they were looking at two other sites in Buckingham, most likely along Route 15 where the gold pyrite belt is. Our guess is New Canton or the Booker Mine southwest of Dilwyn. Metallic mining doesn't just drain and poison the groundwater for miles around. It also bankrupts the community it invades. So I challenge any of you supervisors to make a motion to bring the rights space ordinance to a public hearing now. Why wait? You don't have to wait for the committee to advise you. Let the people of this county know you care. Let Richmond and the 2.7 million people downstream from us in just the James River watershed. That doesn't include all of the other four watersheds that could be impacted.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chad Obol, District 6, and Ramona Christian will be next.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here, for listening to us, and Happy New Year. I'm in District 6, which is Mr. Chambers' district, and I live at 571 Woods Road. I think that most of you will agree at this point in the process of considering gold mines that you really don't want it, I think, pretty much. I haven't talked individually to all of you, but that's the feeling I'm getting. And if you've read the National Academy of Sciences report, you would have plenty of proof why it isn't a good idea here. We're ill-prepared for this to happen and I don't think that there's any amount of preparation because a gold mine anywhere is disastrous. It's been proven time and time again. You have several citizens that even visited a mine that this industrial gold mine was compared to by the Exploratory Drilling Company. And that community is pretty much wiped out. People have moved away. It's a terrible thing. In addition to that, you've heard from Mr. Sackett this evening about all of the effects that may not be identified but down the road will affect folks. So I think anybody with a mind would know that this is not a good idea. So here we are with considering a committee. And I kind of question why we're even considering a committee. Why not just go straight to the ordinances, decide what you want to do, somebody make a motion, and go for it? Because we are wasting time. But if we are to have a committee, let's include as many experts on that committee as we can gather. And Friends of Buckingham has offered a connection to very good legal assistants that knows about land ordinances. We also have the Rights of Nature Ordinance that's been well researched. So I would hope, and we have, and we have people in this room, Kendah Honeman, who already served on the committee. We need to get those people on this committee. And isn't this part of the democratic process anyway? Don't we want people involved? Don't we want to hear from people? This is like censoring, censoring of our voices. And I really have to say that. It's, we're in a dangerous position, not only here in this county, but in this country. Let's include people. Let's hear their voices. It's the diversity of the voices that informs our decisions and makes them better decisions, more creative and just decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ramona Christian, District 1, and Marie Flowers will be next.
Hello. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here tonight to respond to the two comments made by two citizens and the action taken by the Board of Supervisors at the last meeting concerning the election and an employee of the Electoral Board. I want to remind the supervisors and the citizens that the Buckingham Electoral Board is a separate and independent board from the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors has no authority over the Board of Elections or Electoral Board or its employees. The Electoral Board is not subordinate to the Board of Supervisors. This is actually in Virginia election law, Article 4, 24.2-109 through 1010. The Electoral Board appoints or hires a registrar and his or her employees for a period of four years. The contract comes up every four years. Again, it's right here. If any of y'all want to borrow my book and look, I'll let you have it. And so they, the Electoral Board members are appointed by the political party chair in power at the governor's mansion. That chair takes those names to the circuit court judge and he confirms them. It does not concern anyone else in this county or this state, not even the governor, except the political party chair and the circuit court clerk, judge, judge blessing. Anyway, any letters of support or reprimand can only be relevant when coming from the Electoral Board. The three members of the Electoral Board are the ones that see all the issues, complaints, reports, compliments, not the Board of Supervisors. They alone are given the authority by the law of the state of Virginia to handle these issues concerning any and all elections and any issues related to employees. A letter commenting on any issues of the election process would be overstepping the authority given the Board of Supervisors by the law of the state of Virginia. This would be equivalent to the Electoral Board sending a letter of reprimand to you, Mr. Chair, saying they disapproved of the job you were doing. It's none of their business what you do. They have no authority over you. That would be absolutely none of their business and could lead to potential lawsuits when commenting, the commenting party does not know all of the issues, evidence, or have seen any of the documentation. It is always dangerous to operate out of gossip and innuendo. While it is always good to hear comments regarding the elections in our county, it would serve our community better if election issues were raised at the Electoral Board meetings since they alone have invested the authority over everything pertaining to elections by the law of the state of Virginia. Other community manners are assigned to you, the Board of Supervisors, by law and they should take precedence over another board's issues.
Thank you, ma'am.
Marie Flowers, District 3, and Diane Gillian, District 4, will be next.
Hello. Marie Flowers, 266 La Grande Lane, Coorsville area. And I am concerned about the toxic spillover, the ordinance. And I, you know, when we bring up things, it's for all of us. You all live here. You have families here. I can never understand why you do not look at things in that respect. And we do need, I think, more people on this committee. Why not? Are you all afraid of the input from the citizens? What another idea might be to get somebody on the committee who is for gold mining so that you can see another point of view. that you can see another point of view? But I just, and I would like to know the reason why you just can't bring up a vote as Mrs. Oba suggested, to bring up the vote and vote on it for the non-toxic trespass. I don't, I don't understand why you can't give us a reason as to why this is dragging out so long. I think that's all I got to say, except that you live here. I'm not speaking just for myself. You live here, you have families here. You need to do what is the best, and if there is some impediment, you need to deal with it and fight it and do what is the best thing for the people of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Diane Gilliland, District Four, and Julia Gibson will be next.
Diane Gilliland, District Four. I don't even know where to begin. Buckingham, Buckingham. When you say Buckingham, you're the heart of Virginia, the heart of Virginia, not the rear end. You're the heart. You put in mining, there goes our air quality. There goes our water quality. You put in all these solar panels, there goes our, again, there goes our water quality, the runoff. You cut off those valves from the heart, you're killing it. You kill the heart. You're taking the heart out of Virginia. What's Virginia without the heart? What's Virginia without rural communities like ours? Because of all of you sitting up here, our rural community is going down the tubes. Our rural community will become a ghost town. Our rural community will be no more because you have taken the heart and stomped it, destroyed it, mutilated it, all because what, you want to grease your pockets with more money? Because the more, the more people that are going, woo, let's do this gold mine, you get more money in your pocket. All these solar panels, are you getting money in your pockets for that? You're cutting the heart of Virginia out. You're not listening to the people of this community. You're killing us. You're killing us because you don't care. Neither one, none of y'all are listening to any of these folks out here. Not one of you are listening. If you were listening, we would not be in this situation right now. The heart, the heart of Virginia, Buckingham, Virginia. You're killing it. Why? Seven of you, seven of you. And you are killing the heart of Virginia. You're killing our rural community because you don't have the guts to stand up and say, nope, we're not doing this. No, we will not change rural Virginia for, for gold mine. We will not change rural Virginia for all these solar, thousands of acres of solar panels. For what? For what? What do you gain? We gain nothing. We gain dirty air. We gain dirty water. We gain nothing.
Julia Gibson, District Five, and Chris Godzchak will be next.
We need to stop hollering at the meeting, acting a bunch of clowns. We up here trying to do business for the county. Why don't you respect people and keep your comments to yourself? Say what?
Call the First Amendment, sir.
Look at here, you go shut your mouth up till you get a say to speak. You, you don't.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
You don't have the point to speak right now. And I know another way to tell you to shut up. When you got the time to speak, you speak.
I'm asking politely to be quiet. Shut up yourself with those nasty words. How long have you used your?
Well, why don't you be quiet then, ma'am?
Why don't you ask politely?
I'm asking politely.
We'll talk about the law in a minute.
Point of order.
We can't have all of citizens like this, rural citizens, clapping their hands like at a baseball game. This is not a baseball game. We trying to do business for the county. Y'all come here and tell us do business for the county? People hollering, clapping their hands, whatnot, is that respectable or disrespectful? We need to work together in the county. We not working together because people like that. Look at here, one more word and you're getting out of this meeting. You're disorderly. We can't conduct the meeting in a time order with your mouth. You can take it any way you want to take it. All right. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Julia Gibson, Hundley Branch Road, District Five. Supervisor Miles, reportedly you still refuse to see the value in a rights-based ordinance. Why? We have presented you with proven examples of this type of ordinance in action across the states. We have facilitated a presentation by a group of environmental lawyers and activists who have well over 100 years of collective experience solving this very problem and have spoon-fed you the best legal defense against gold mining in this county. Your constituents have been asking you over and over for months to enact a rights-based ordinance. I honestly cannot understand why you refuse to do what your constituents ask, all of you. Several months ago, after the first Board of Supervisors meeting I attended, I Googled Supervisor Miles, and I found your Miles for Maysville page from when you first ran for the Board of Supervisors. Your website bio stated that you stand for principled leadership, integrity, and faith in your fellow man and woman. Your campaign slogan was "Proven Leadership You Can Trust." I immediately felt relieved. I thought, wow, thank goodness, we're standing up against this big corporation and the potential environmental ruin of our property. But this guy is young and local, his family is from here, he seems honest, he claims we can trust him, and he's promising to lead his constituents with integrity. Surely he will get this done. Now, knowing that you don't support the rights-based ordinance, I'm really disappointed. I don't feel that I can trust you. I don't feel that you're doing what your constituents are asking you for. Were your campaign statements just the standard rosy politician lip service? Because the version of Supervisor Miles that you portrayed in your campaign would have had this rights-based ordinance drawn up months ago. Your weak stance on this issue does not ooze proven leadership. The entire state is watching us. A story on the gold mine situation in Buckingham ran in the Richmond Times-Dispatch on Sunday. I assume you have career goals outside Buckingham. Do you think Virginians will look favorably at you when they learn that when faced with the biggest threat in the modern history of your county, you failed to do all you could to ensure the safety and health of the place your own family is from? Please include four residents on the County Gold Mining Committee. The County Litter Committee has seven residents. I think something as monumental as a potential gold mine deserves at least four residents on the committee. A heartfelt thank you to Supervisor Bryant for agreeing to our request for the committee. We greatly appreciate that you are listening to your constituents.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Godzchak, District Five, and David Ball will be next.
Hi, my, my name is Chris Godzchak. I live in District Five, and I don't really have a full speech prepared, but I do have some points that I just want to go over. So Buckingham County has a population of about 17,000 people, and having just one person be, or one member of the community be assigned to this committee to study the impact of gold mining puts us at essentially 0.006 percent of the community involved in this process. I think that's absurd. I mean, there's no reason why we shouldn't have more community involvement, especially because there's a wide range of opinions and expertises here. Additionally, as other people have mentioned, a gold mine happens in Buckingham, Buckingham will end up being a shell of itself. And I've been to the communities where the economic opportunities have come and gone, and they are all, like other people said, they're ghost towns. They, like, they've unincorporated, they barely exist, and just a shell of their former selves. I don't see any reason why we can't vote on, or, or we can't openly discuss the ordinances that we've proposed, and I don't see any reason why those can't be heard now. But even if that has to wait, then we absolutely need to have more community representation. Just having one person is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
David Ball, District Three, and Teresa McManus is next.
Don't want this thing to fall apart. David Ball, District Three, how are you, gentlemen, this evening? Good. I have a number of different things to take up, one of which has to do with something that was on the website, and it's the map for the IDA meeting, which is the Industrial Development Authority, and it says it's going to be in Colorado on the 2nd of February. Is that true? I mean, that's the map that's on the county website. And I was a little surprised that it's listed at Buckingham Hall. Somebody obviously found that. Yeah. And that's on Groundhog Day, so I guess that's going to repeat over and over. All right, for everybody's benefit, and it's not been talked about here, Virginia does have DMME, or it's now called Virginia Power or something like that. It's got a new name, but anyway, what they have is a set of ordinances and rules and all that governs all the mining because Virginia has the most comprehensive mining regulations in the state. And I think that's something that ought to be taken into consideration, reviewed, examined, and, and, you know, understood. The other issue would be procedures. A lot of these issues come to the Buckingham Board of Supervisors, such as the pipeline and other issues that have gotten voted on long, long before it goes through federal processes, state processes, and by the time it goes through all those, it never gets approved. And it sort of becomes pointless for you to have to consider something that you don't know whether it's going to actually happen or not, despite whatever processes a corporation might make. So it behoves you to change the process to where they need to have all their approvals from all agencies before it comes to you because you are the last vote typically. That's what it should be. And I know in other parts of the state, other counties, that's exactly what they do. Another issue that's been brought to my attention, and that has to do with the FOIA training. Now, the question is whether or not you guys can legally operate without having current FOIA training. And from what's on record, most everybody got their FOIA training in 2020, and it's a two-year approval, so you're out of, out of training. And the question is, do you have a legal right to continue to operate until you've been FOIA certified? So that's...
All right, thank you, sir.
Teresa McManus, District Two. That will be all.
Teresa McManus, District Two. I came here to actually congratulate you. I am going to congratulate you, and then I'm going to say to you, do you know your board members have for years since somebody talked about gossip? I'm going to talk about gossip. I was told, Mr. Chambers, that you owed millions to the county. Let me say something. Mr. Chambers is in good standing in this county because I checked. I don't repeat any rumors that your board members have told me. This is my time. You guys are all in a lot of trouble because you don't know the, the law in this county. You don't know your own law. Don't look down, Mr. Matthews. I expect you to listen to me. I'm leaving your county, so aren't you happy? I'll be out of here in a few months, but until I do, I'm going to bring the wrath of God down on you. I'm going to make sure you follow the law, to the letter of the law. I've asked you to read the Constitution. I know none of you probably have. Do you know what? Article One, Section Two of the Virginia's Constitution says? No, you don't. It's we, the people, have the power. You've forgotten that. Everybody here, how many months? Mr. Gillum, I've talked to you before about the gold mine. You flatly said, why don't we do something? I'm so tired of hearing these people talk about this ordinance. Jordan Miles, what's your problem? That young lady was excellent with what she said. You've lied to us all along. You don't give a shit about this county.
Watch your language, ma'am.
So all of you...
Listen, ma'am.
I am sorry, I cussed. I apologize to the committee and to the people here. But here's the deal, you guys have got to understand, you represent us. You represent the people. You know what you don't like is all of a sudden the people now know what the law is. And I will continue to educate the people on what the law is and how to represent themselves properly. It hasn't been done in this county for, what, 30 years, so I've been told? You're in a little bit of a mess. You're all going into a closed session for lawyers. Why is that? Well, probably because you didn't follow the law. And now you got your knickers in a twist, gentlemen. We didn't do that, you did it because you didn't follow the law. Oh, my goodness. How about education? I've talked about education. I just found out by Mr. Balls that, what, you're not even in, in code? You haven't got training you're supposed to have. Dear Lord, what do you think the people in this county want? I've defended everyone in this county over and over again. I'm not defending you anymore. Y'all need to get some training. It's my phone, Jordan, don't be looking around. Y'all need to have training, you need to know what the hell's going on, and you need to listen to the people. It's the people who put you up here, and it's the people who are going to take you out.
Listen, ma'am, one thing I want to tell you is a big liar. Mr. McManus, you said I was a big liar, I want you to prove that. Another thing, you're a racist. You're a, you're a racist. Hold it up, let me talk, let me talk, let me talk, hold it. You are...
Point of order.
Point of order.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is this, you're a racist. When a supervisor up here made a motion, my granddaughter receive a plaque for Mr. Fire County Fair, you calling me cursed about because you appointed a black person. Is that not racist? Your friends don't know that. How you call a supervisor being, and, and cursed here for appointing my granddaughter for, for receive a plaque for Mr. Fire County?
So I think I have a child in the county who doesn't...
No, Ms. McManus, let me tell you something. Ms. McManus, let me tell you something. I don't care what you say about me, leave my grandchildren out of it.
Bring up the race card.
You're so racist.
I am, my mom's...
I know you are.
My mom's black.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Look, I'm through with your mouth, okay? I'm not scared of you. Look, Mr. Kidd, she need to get out of the meeting. She being disrespectful, she need to get out of the meeting. Can't conduct a meeting with her in it, with her attitude. When you want to come back and act like a decent person, we can get you back. Take your knife. Huh? Yeah. Nope. I done gave her two warnings, she need to leave the meeting, sir.
Want to recess, Mr. Chairman?
I'm going to recess the meeting until she leave. I'm gonna recess the meeting and she leave. V-Dot.
Welcome.
Mr. Chairman. It's good to be here tonight. Thank you for having me.
Can you beat that show?
I don't want to create a competition, but I do have, in the four counties I serve, I have 28 supervisors, and I think if you counted number of work orders created by each supervisor, I think Mr. Miles does the best job for his constituents of all 28 supervisors.
No, no, don't, don't say that, really. That's no...
He brings a lot of issues to us. That's because he's out talking to his people, so I do think he does a great job for his constituents.
Congratulations, Jordan.
No, thank you.
It's not a competition, though. I do want to point that out. Um, so we've been working up on cleaning the trees that were blown down recently. Um, we got a few more of them left out there to get, and we, we're pretty well aware of where they are. Um, we finished mowing our full cutback and touching up our secondaries for the year. We're still using our Boomax to cut back brush. We'll continue to do that throughout the winter. Uh, we're spotting gravel on our non-hard surface roads. Really can't do a whole lot of blading on them when they're as wet as they are right now, but we're trying to add gravel to them where they're soft. Um, we're fixing potholes as they come up. As we move into, uh, spring, we'll be cleaning out our pipes and our ditches. Uh, we're going to make a big, big push towards cleaning out ditches this spring, so you'll be seeing us do that. Um, and then, like I said, as, as we move into springtime, uh, when the weather breaks, we'll pick our roll rustic program back up. So one thing that we do every spring is meet with you guys. We have a work session, so we need to think about a date that we want to do that. I know next month is already February, but at least be thinking about whether you'd like to do a work session before maybe the February meeting, or if not, then we'd have to do it at the March meeting because we have a public hearing in April. Um, but I wanted to point that out to you guys, and at this time, I'll turn it over to y'all for any, uh, issues, comments, or concerns you'd like to bring to me.
Uh, District One?
Uh, yeah, I just want to thank Scott for coming to take care of the trees I called him about during the windstorm.
Well, thank you for letting us know about that one.
Uh, District Two?
District Two. Uh, Mr. Frederick, uh, y'all overall have done a good job. District Two has a problem with Bell Road. Uh, 650, I was at Chuck Stop today, and some of your pavers came down through there. I know that you pave it continues, I mean, uh, replacing the pot, I mean, fixing the potholes continuously, but I would ask you to do a traffic count somewhere between 15 and the end of Bell Road at some point. Uh, I understand that fixing the potholes is one thing, but I'm in believe that total resurfacing that road is 100%. I had one lady here tonight who's calling me and says she needs to go to the dentist because of teeth she shake out of it when she goes up the road. So I, I wouldn't have put that on you till you threw Mr. Miles a trophy, so I'm gonna let you turn around and deal with her tonight.
We're happy to take a look.
You see that lady with fat mask going back there? She's got boxing gloves, too.
Happy to look, thank you.
All right, well, if you would, would you please address that? Uh, because, uh, I think that needs to be taken care of, and maybe let's get a traffic count on that road and see what we need to do, pave, paving a new road for her and her constituents on 650.
Just there, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
District Three?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Frederick, I had a lady, uh, give me an, uh, email today. She gave me an email, Diane O'Brien. She said that the, uh, that the ditches had not been cut all year from boxes, but her box number is 6352 Andersonville Road, but she listed, uh, 67, 62 through 7392.
The second address one more time?
Uh, it was box numbers 67, 62 through 7392 Andersonville Road.
Okay, that'll be an easy one to catch, like I said.
But she told me that the entire road has not been cut, and I don't know if that's...
Yeah, I mean, we were located out on that road and up until about six months ago.
Maybe after you moved all your equipment, you forgot to cut the ditches or something.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, we, we'll take a look at the ditches, and if they need to be done, we'll get them cleaned out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, District Four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, the stop sign across from the Buckingham Post Office, uh, near where the County Administrator lives and halfway near where I live is, is down, stop ahead, I should say. Sorry, the stop ahead sign is down, so, um, that and the, um, and get to close...
Can you tell me that road one more time?
Oak Hill, 633, right, yes, well, yes, sir, 633. Um, on, uh, St. Andrews Church Road and on, um, Ranson Road that is connected to St. Andrews Church Road, I've noticed a lot of the shoulder deterioration that's right at Chairman Chambers in my district. Uh, if you have to get off the road due to a big truck, you're going to tear something off pieces for part of your, for your car and throw it out of alignment. Um, and there was one other thing. Yeah. Oh, for Hall Road, the 60 end of Hall Road is really, really windy, and a lot of people use it as a cut-through road. I say a lot, some people use it as a cut-through road, especially where the Davises live. I didn't know if y'all could look into, uh, windy road sign, just to let folks know. And the road does get very narrow. It expands in time, but I just, for the folks who live on that road and...
Yeah, we can, I'll submit...
Travel that road.
I'll submit that to Traffic Engineering, and they'll review all the curves, see if they need to be signed.
And it's on the 60 end, not the, um, Slade River Mill end.
Okay, thank you for repeating that.
Thank you, sir.
That's three right there.
Mr. Five? Mr. Five?
Yeah, uh, old, uh, 602 from Glenmore coming... Fort Buckingham toward Route 60, Route 56. Thing is rough as a goat gut.
Yes, sir.
It is bad.
Is it?
And, uh, on Glenmore Road, just, uh, east of Glenmore, there's some, you know, limbs that's been going on the side of the road, just pretty well, almost in a traffic lane. Not in a traffic lane, but pretty close. Just from this recent storm, but...
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all for getting one through the Route 20, lucky. I told you that was, that was real good. Worked good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll, uh, we'll take a look at 602. I believe that one's on the schedule to be resurfaced in the near future, hopefully this coming season. Um, we'll, uh, but we'll take a look at it and see if there's anything we do in the meantime, absolutely.
District Six, uh, what, what the number up there, what is the problem? You was talking about 56, Mr. Jones?
Okay, yeah, I'll submit that location to Traffic Engineering as well. We'll get it reviewed, see if there's anything we can install to help.
District Seven?
Oh, thank you. Most time I don't bring it up because I'm on the same road as the V-Dot. I just go up there and tell them, but I do have one thing I saw yesterday. Uh, over on 617, about the end of the road, where the county, end of the county road, uh, there's a lot more trees just right near the edge of the road, so if you run off the road, you go hit a tree.
Okay, yeah, we'll have to work towards cutting that brush back.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? Thank you, guys.
Moving at the end, public hearings, um, case number 22 SUP 319. Ms. Depp, have you got that?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have a public hearing for case 22 SUP 319. The landowner is Ivan P. Davis at 106 Wetstone Lane, Dillon, and the applicant is Rosney Creek Solar LLC. Property information, text map 151 parcel 21. The parcel itself contains approximately 439 acres located at 19691 East James Anderson Highway. Um, as this case came before you last month, the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit to allow for the construction and operation of a five-megawatt utility-scale solar facility on approximately 55 acres of the 439-acre parcel here in Buckingham. Um, these conditions are the same that were presented to you last month. Um, there are some updates in regard to the conceptual, um, plan for design and the layout of the solar facility itself. I have distributed those. Mary Margaret Hertz with Apex and with the applicant, Rosney Creek Solar LLC, is here this evening to address questions, comments, and concerns, and we do have individuals signed up for the public hearing.
In the board, don't send any questions for open the public hearing? When they add this time to the public hearing, be open.
We have three, Stephanie Marshall, District Five. Ruth Aldridge will be next.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
My name is Stephanie Marshall, and I own a cattle farm on 3323 Axelle Road in Buckingham County. I'm opposed to the construction of yet another solar facility in Buckingham County, and respectfully ask that the Board of Supervisors consider the long-term impacts of these facilities on our county instead of just the short-term gains the developers are promising. Solar facilities have a lifespan of 30 years on average. Does the financial gain of these colossal temporary and potentially dangerous structures outweigh the health of the people of Buckingham County, the quality of its water, and the beauty of its landscape? My concern is our readiness for the possibility of a fire. Our fire protection is made up of four volunteer departments with all support staff being volunteers. What happens when the solar facilities catch fire? You have volunteers responding to a hazmat fire who are not trained or equipped with a limited water reserve. The burning panels create highly toxic and carcinogenic smoke and continue to produce hundreds of volts of electricity even when disconnected. Included with this is the contaminants and heavy metals that leach into the soil and flow into our water system, which eventually leads to the mighty James. How often do solar facilities catch fire, you might ask? Dominion Energy's own Sadler Solar in Greensville County, which is located outside of Emporia, Virginia, had fires March 3rd and March 29th of 2022. According to reports by the Independent Messenger, the causes were a failed connector in a solar array and an inverter, which is very common. County emergency services were required to contain both fires both times. In July of 2022, a solar facility that is under construction in Pennsylvania County outside of Gretna caught fire. I have copies of both articles for your review, which I brought with me, and I have only listed the most recent fires and the incidents in neighboring counties. These are not the first fires and will not be the last fires caused by an industrial solar plant. The solar facilities are an enormous risk and liability and will endanger the safety and well-being of the citizens of the county. What training and special equipment will be provided to our volunteer departments, and what steps will Buckingham County put into place to ready ourselves for the inevitable? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next?
Ruth Aldridge, District Six, and David Ball will be next.
Good evening. Happy New Year, 2023. As a concerned citizen, I spoke in 2022, two times, and I'm here to speak for the third time about my concerns for water-specific quality pre- and post-installation of additional solar farms at Buckingham, Virginia, the heart of Virginia. For those that are, were not at those meetings, I have to buy bottled corporate water due to my health concerns and/or issues because of my own well-water conditions. It is not in a condition to drink without being filtered prior to drinking per a study that I participated in. Again, waterways are a major concern that needs to be addressed and researched for potential contamination for not only the landscape of the natural environment, but the animals and especially the humans that live and breathe here. When these citizens are potentially affected by the health-related issues that can occur, what will Buckingham and you do about this? What is the plan, and is there a plan in place for the public that they can refer to quickly of what the plan will be? Will the companies that are contract, contracted for the solar farms be responsible for potential health-related diseases to citizens? Will Buckingham County be the heart of Virginia, become the shining headline example of potential Flint, Michigan toxic water wasteland disasters, along with the gold mining concerns that have been brought by concerned citizens? Will the potential water issues be evolving? Please pause in planning on additional solar facilities and/or gold mining until more research is completed locally and beyond Buckingham, Virginia, all across the United States. Financial gains should never be for a county over health concerns of the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
David Ball, District Three, and that will be all.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Ball, District Three. Uh, first off, I want to talk about the fact that you don't have a solar policy, and I know you keep rolling that down the road and never getting a solar policy while you keep approving all these solar projects. And part of that has to do with the fact that if you take, like, this application, you're going to take pretty much his farm and count that towards the solar, not just the area that's impacted by the solar, and then you disqualify all the other people who might want to have solar or limited solar set up on their properties because you talk about a cap on how much solar. So that's a concern, and there are various different methodologies for implementation of solar throughout, uh, the country. You, you know, if you did total research, and I've seen this since the 1970s, so I'm somewhat familiar with it, but I'm not an expert. The other issue I've brought up is the fact that you have the impoundment, which is a state or it's county water impoundment, the dam, that sits right next to the solar. Now, I've raised concerns about the fact that if we have a 100-year storm or a 500-year storm, will this solar impoundment area be satisfactory in containing the excess runoff that comes from that storm event that could adversely impact that water impoundment? Now, when I was the solar water director, we dealt with the state issues, one of the things that got put through the state because of issues that occurred back in, uh, 20, prior to 2010, over heavy storms that impacted properties with these type of impoundments, what you're looking at is the fact that any excess overflow of water because of these heavy, rare, but more frequent type events could adversely cause a failure to that impoundment. And part of that was each of these impoundments were updated to a higher classification, and the burden, once they were... and the burden, once they were all approved through the process, falls to the property owner and to the developer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we will close the public hearing. Any supervisors have a question?
I actually have a couple of questions. Who would I, is Apex here, or who would I address the questions to?
Mary Margaret is here.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy New Year to you. First question I want to ask you is this, Mary Margaret, is this a little different than most solar power farms? Isn't this helping reproduce what you told? Could you explain how this is helping some go back into the county?
Yes. Yeah, this is a, sure, gladly. This is, we are, our goal for this project is for it to be a community solar project, meaning the energy would stay local and local, sorry, Dominion Energy customers would be able to participate in it and benefit from the energy offsets from the energy that's produced. So all of this electricity, instead of being shipped elsewhere via large transmission lines, it does stay local on the distribution lines.
Are you saying some of the power that's going to come back into the residents of Buckingham, correct?
It will, it will. And it's, just for complete clarity, you won't see it on your electricity bill unless you participate in the program.
Did you not say in the meet and greet when I was there, did you not say that if you signed up for this, that you could get possibly ten percent off your electric bill?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So I've, like everyone else here, have read the, the, the application and the conditions, and I want to commend you all on these, on these conditions. These are the Riverstone conditions that we approved earlier in January, and that's a big project. And it's the same as being applied here, which is very stringent. In fact, one or two instances, the setback is much greater than the previous project. So I just want to commend you all on, on doing your due diligence with regards to that, for that fifty-five acre tract there.
Thank you. It's, it's important to us that we comply with those conditions because they are very carefully deliberated, and we understand what's at stake. So we'd really like to follow that, their good example.
And just a follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. How many runoff basins was?
We've got three preliminary drawn out.
Okay.
So those will be finalized once we get engineers with boots on the ground for construction, construction plans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, I have one more question, and I think this goes to Carl or Nikki. Maybe you could explain to me if you don't mind. So when we had a cap on the solar power, before I got on the board, I think it was a cap, Mr. Allen made the motion that night of how many, how many acres? Twenty-four hundred or something like that?
Forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred. Am I right for the people who are against solar power that this small fifty-five acre facility actually eats up four hundred and fifty-five?
Thirty-nine.
That, or four hundred and thirty-nine that could be used for, so it, basically, it's eating up four hundred and some acres of the allotted solar powered farm that we had ordinance on or made a limit on forty-five hundred acres. So we are only sacrificing fifty-five acres and actually taking up four hundred and some acres. Is that right? That?
Well, they have, they have applied for the four hundred and thirty-nine acres.
Right, but they're only using fifty-five, correct?
That's right.
And the four thirty-nine that they're using eats into the forty-five hundred that was approved before I got on the board. So for anyone who's against the solar power, you've got basically four hundred acres it's eaten up that this project is not using, correct?
But they can't come back and apply for another special use.
But they would have to come back and do that. At this point, it eats into that, correct? Is that right, Mr. Martin?
That's right.
For the fifty-five acres, they still don't use, but twenty acres is what was said in one of these papers. Twenty acres is all they need to put in what they're talking about, this five-megawatt.
But they're using fifty-five. So for the people.
They got a paperwork that says fifty-five. But our, our paperwork still says four hundred and thirty-nine acres.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So I guess I would ask staff for clarification on this. We're adding fifty-five acres to the, to the cap, or we're adding four hundred and thirty-nine acres?
Four hundred and thirty-nine.
Okay, just, just so we're all clear, okay.
So, so that would, so that would eat into, the four thirty-nine would eat into the forty-five hundred that was allotted. And at this point, right now, all Mr. Davis is asking for is for fifty-five acres, or Rosney Creek.
That's all they're counting on using.
Okay, all right, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. I asked you a question last time. What was the projected profitability of the, of the solar, of this fifty-five acres that he's putting in? What is the projection of that?
I do not have one for you. I can say that we do expect to make a profit. I couldn't tell you how much. There's too many variables at stake for me, or really anyone at our company to put a definitive number on it at this time. But we've got a lot at risk. That's part of doing business. You know, we've got to make a risk to make money potentially, and we wouldn't be here if we didn't think that we had a shot at it.
They had to put a pencil to it at some point in time. They just stopped going flying by the seat of their pants, already.
Oh, well, you'd be surprised. No, I'm just, I'm, yeah. It's, there's a lot up in the air that we're, you know, it's not just this part. We're contingent on, we're very, very dependent on legislation, which is constantly moving, especially for renewable energy policy. In fact, you know, if we don't get to participate in this Virginia shared solar program because the capacity fills up, we won't be able to build the project. We know for sure that it wouldn't pencil at that point for us. So that's just one example.
What about the retention ponds? Did you have three projected retention ponds by your engineers? Is that right?
Yes, preliminary.
And, you know, the conditions on the Riverstone project, we had over a hundred. So this is on fifty-five acres versus two thousand acres. So I'm just thinking, just looking at the, at the topographical stuff, that those corners that are close to the creeks and that watershed, I don't think it's going to suffice with three retention ponds on this piece of property.
Did you see that we had expanded our wetland setbacks to a hundred feet? It was originally fifty.
I, I saw that, but also I was going back to the conditions that we put on Riverstone. You had, you're talking about the vegetation and timber remaining to substantially obscure the view of the solar equipment and security fence is, is on the applicant to plant. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
So that's you. So we developed a, a species of pine trees and other vegetation on the Riverstone project. And I'm not going to say that's going to be conducive for this project, but I think there should be something, and we're going to spell that out later on in the conditions once we come to an agreement, so that we make sure that the adjoining landowners are going to be protected from the view, obscured view of these solar panels.
It'd be a pretty substantial vegetative buffer there existing, so we would supplant it, of course, per your recommendations.
And you know that it's going to be about four sets of eyes on this engineered plan as far as stormwater is concerned. So, you know, your engineer, better hope he's crossing his Ts and dotting his Is because there's going to be a lot of people looking at this. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In the, in the introductory on the project interview, it does, to point to what Supervisor Matthews was saying, it states that the project represents an initial capital investment of over seven million and will create twenty-five full-time equivalent jobs over construction of the project.
Any more questions? What is the board's pledge?
I make a motion, we go ahead and approve this project.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman. As soon as Supervisor Gilliam.
I'll close the public hearing. I already closed the public hearing. There was a motion by Supervisor Gilliam and second by Supervisor Miles that we approve this project. All in favor? Seven, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Evans?
The next case before you is twenty-two, SUP three twenty. Landowner Terry Husky, applicant Chris Hucks. The property information, it's located at seven ninety-nine Troublesome Creek Road, Buckingham, in the Mayesville District. It is tax map one twenty-three, parcel forty-eight, containing approximately thirteen acres. Mr. Hucks came before you last month, asking for this public hearing to obtain a special use permit to operate a professional services offices, non-retail medical office at this particular home on seven ninety-nine Troublesome Creek Road. The conditions that were presented last month are the conditions that stand this month. There were no requested amendments or changes. And Mr. Hucks is present this evening to discuss this case. And there are, is there any, there is one person signed up for public hearing.
Okay. We open the public hearing at this time.
Charles Smith, District Four.
District Four.
I'm Charles Smith, Mayesville. I'm an adjacent landowner. I do have concerns about impact of traffic on the project. And I do ask that the permit be amended to include signage both north and south of the property on Troublesome Creek Road to ensure people don't miss the turn and wind up turning onto our land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did you hear that, Ms. Evans?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay.
Of course, that discussion will be with the applicant. If he agrees to that, and he would need to most likely have a consultation with VDOT because they would be the ones controlling whether or not signage would be permitted per their guidelines. But I'm sure they'd all be agreeable to maximizing safety.
Okay, thank you. The applicant here tonight?
Yes, sir.
In the board, may I have a?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Would you come forward, sir? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a question for the applicant.
Yes, sir.
First, Mr. Hucks, I'd like to thank you, thank you for bringing your talent and your expertise and investment to the county. We need more healthcare professionals in the county, as we all know, so thank you. I had communicated with you, I guess maybe Friday, some questions from one of the landowners, and could you just address those briefly? I know we talked about signs, and you're open to signs, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
To the, my recollection of the email was in regard to signage, which of course is authorized by VDOT, but I don't have any reservations about doing that.
Okay, so you don't have any issue with that at all? Okay.
There was a question about the amount of space or parking.
Right.
I would only hope that I would have to figure out how to handle more parking space than is what is on the address there. And the question in regard to medical transport services, as I spoke, I'm not, I don't recall or am able to, if you're able to ask me directly in regard to what that entails, I'm happy to try to answer it, but I'm not running a EMS service or there's not going to be a high volume of ambulances in and out of the facility.
Well, if anybody hits me while I'm jogging, intentionally or unintentionally, I know where to be dropped off at.
Well, VDOT has graciously cleared the ditches of the trees, so I think you'll be all right.
Any more questions for the applicant?
Actually, Chris, I want to tell you, you work with me and my kids, my family. I want to welcome you to Buckingham. We absolutely need more people like you. And again, last week, you took care of me when I had a bad cough, and unfortunately, that's over with. And I, speaking from District Two, welcome, and we hope you have a great success.
Well, I certainly appreciate that.
While we got, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
While we got Mr. Frederick here from VDOT, would there be any issues putting signage for the business on that road?
Well, I'm glad you asked. Do you got? Or is a business driveway? County wants him to have additional signage, say where the business is at?
So Mr. Edwards, you know, with VDOT has assessed the entrance and has signed off on that.
Right.
I think it's only, you know, important to have signage to be able to direct him to the office. I don't have any reservations about doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Application ahead, that signage.
Can we do that now, Nikki?
Is it now, now?
No, so we can do it.
So what would, so, Mr. Chairman, what we would be doing is requiring signs on either side of your entrance.
Okay.
Per county standards, is that? For safety, obviously.
Sure.
Okay.
That's what you said, right? You said you had, you were willing to put the signs up, right?
Yeah.
Okay, no problem. I want to make sure. Okay. I'll close the public hearing. What is your pledge, boy?
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the, case twenty-two, that's SUP three twenty, with the amended condition regarding the signs. Sure, sir.
Get a second? Motion second by Supervisor Brandt to be approve this with the addition with the signs. Okay? All in favor? Seven, yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The next case before you is an introduction for twenty-two, SUP three twenty-two. The landowners and applicants are Lawrence and Barbara Hollister at four eight hundred Mosley Road in Mosley, Virginia. Their property here in Buckingham is identified as twenty-eight seventy Rock Mill Road, Dilwyn, Virginia, in the Curtsville District, tax map one sixty-one, parcel twenty. It's approximately four hundred and seventy-two point five acres. It is an A-one zoning district. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to schedule a public hearing for this request. There are eleven conditions, very similar to the prior Airbnbs or bed and breakfasts that have been permitted in the last year. This does not have an event center or campgrounds associated, just the Airbnb short-term rental, bed and breakfast. This case was introduced to the Planning Commission November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, and a public hearing held on December twenty-seventh. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this case to the Board of Supervisors. Would it be the pleasure of the Board to hold a public hearing February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, six p.m.?
What is the pledge of the Board?
I move that, Mr. Chairman, that we hold a February public hearing at six p.m. during a regular board meeting.
The motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Davis, that we hold a public hearing in February, February meeting. All right? All in favor? Seven, yes, okay. Ms. Evans?
Yes, sir. The last case before you this evening is an introduction of case twenty-two, SUP three twenty-three. The landowners and applicants are Buckingham County Firefighters Association. Their tax map is one twenty-five, parcel eleven. It is twenty-eight acres, and it's located at or near the vicinity of three hundred South Constitution Route in Dilwyn. It is in the Mayesville Magisterial District. The zoning district is A-one with a watershed overlay. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an event center for activities, including but not limited to fundraising and a training venue with up to forty-five hundred attendees. There are conditions attached to this application that are the same that has been attached to the other event centers, with the exception of the number of attendees. The applicant originally requested attendees up to six thousand, but prior to the public hearing with the Planning Commission, they actually amended that to forty-five hundred. This case was initially introduced to the Planning Commission on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, and a public hearing on December twenty-seventh. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this case to the Board of Supervisors. Would it be the pleasure of the Board to hold a public hearing February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six p.m.? If there are questions, the applicant is present as well.
What is the pledge of the Board?
Don't move.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Matthews, we hold a public hearing in February concerning this. Are you ready to vote? All right, seven, yes, okay. That's all you got, Ms. Evans?
That's all I have this evening for you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let's move then to Q, Q one. Consider appointment of two board members to the Water and Wastewater Utilities Committee. Who's serving on that now?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Currently, Jordan sits on that, and Cameron sits on that.
Yeah, I want to continue to say.
I'd be glad to.
Have you got a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would move that we appoint Supervisors Miles and Supervisor Gilliam to the Water and Wastewater Utilities Committee. Waste Water Utilities Committee, seeing that those things, that infrastructure's in our district.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Miles and second by Supervisor Allen, that we appoint Supervisor Miles and Gillum to this committee. All in favor? Seven yes. Two, consider of two board members to the Solid Waste Committee. Who serve on that?
Currently, that is Mr. Gillum again, and Brother Bryant.
Okay. Do y'all still want to continue to serve, brother? I mean, Supervisors?
I'm fine with that. Cause that's not the one we talked about. Okay. Yes, sir, I'd be willing to serve.
Have we got a motion?
I move that, Mr. Chairman, that we continue with Supervisors Bryant and Gillum on the Solid Waste Committee.
Motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Matthews, that we continue with the Solid Waste Committee with the two members of Bryant and Gillum. All in favor?
John?
All right. Seven yes. Consider appointment of two board members to the Finance Committee.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee in your battle laws is usually the chairman and then another board member. So currently, for last fiscal year, was Supervisor Miles and Supervisor Matthews. This new year, if you want to stay the same, then it would be Chairman Chambers and then another board member.
And Mr. Matthews.
You want to continue to serve, Jordan?
Sir?
Do you still want to serve? I got no problem, you want to continue?
Well, I don't want, whose spot would I take, though? That's the thing. I said, whose spot would I take?
If you're on it now?
I'm on it now, but so is Supervisor.
You've been taking your spot, same spot what I'm saying, if you still want to serve.
Okay, well, who's the second person going to be?
Uh, Matthews. Matthews.
Okay, sure. It's, okay.
Better still, okay.
Sorry, misunderstood you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And we can update our battle laws to reflect that, because the plan of the battle laws says a chairman.
Since he's already served, let him continue to serve on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But motion by Supervisor Davis, second by Supervisor Gillum, that Supervisor Miles and Supervisor Matthews stay on that Finance Committee. Are you ready to vote? Seven yes. Okay, the next would be the Personnel Committee?
Yes, sir. That currently is Supervisor Chambers and Supervisor Bryant.
I'd move, Mr. Chairman, that Chairman Chambers and Supervisor Bryant remain on that committee as long as they're willing for personnel.
Motion by Miles, second by Davis, that men Supervisor Bryant would serve on the Personnel Committee. Are you ready to vote? My screen went blank.
Jamie?
Okay. Oh, yeah.
There you go.
Seven yes. Okay, and the next is, number five, Director Electoral Board request for a caper of fifteen thousand from budget twenty-twenty-one to the Association Conference. What is your pledge on that board?
Don't move.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Bryant, that we honor this request. Are there any favor? All in favor? Ready to vote? Seven yes. The Industrial Development Authority, that's District Three, you have, that's you, Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir, that's in my district. We haven't got someone to serve yet, but we're working on that right now, as we speak. So, I'm trying to have something by the first of February. When is the meeting for the IDA?
The first Thursday in February.
So, that'll be before our, first?
Second February. Yeah, second of February, but it's the first Thursday.
Okay. If I have somebody before that in place, what do you?
Well, they could attend the meeting, but it needs to be approved by the full board.
Right, okay, got you.
Move down to seven, Finance, ARPA request.
Good evening, Board.
Yes, sir.
So, just have a quick approval I need from you all, whatever you desire. December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, Piedmont Regional Jail came and spoke asking for salary raises and for the bar screens for their toilet to catch contraband. When, you know, they would do shakedowns, the inmates were throwing contraband down the toilet, and these bar screens would prevent that. This was the decision of the Board to wait and see what the other localities did before any motion was approved. Finance Committee met last week and recommend that the ARPA funds be used for the bar screens only. Piedmont Regional Jail has received a quote, and Buckingham's portion of this project would be seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents. What is the pleasure of the Board on this matter?
I'd move, Mr. Chairman, we go with the Committee on Finance's request to allocate the funds to the jail.
Motion by Supervisor Miles and second by Supervisor Allen, we honor this request. Are you ready to vote? Yes. All right. Seven yes. All right. Item eight, Consider Appointment to Goldman Committee.
I recommend Heidi Bertoud.
Bertoud?
To replace?
Okay. Supervisor Bryant made a recommendation. So, what, call that name again?
Heidi.
Heidi Bertoud.
Bertoud. Okay, give her a second, can we get a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, second by Mr. Miles, Supervisor Miles. All in favor of the motion? Seven yes. Okay. Consider retirement purchase of service weapon.
Don't move.
Second, I'm sorry. Motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Matthews. All in favor? Seven yes. Next is Finance Committee update.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'll do that one. Let me see if I can get this hooked up right. All right, everybody's good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it was the decision of the Board last month to task the Finance Committee with looking at, looking at how we deal with personal property taxes. The two things you want the Finance Committee to look at was to bill twice a year, or do we want to prorate personal property taxes? Tonight, I've given you consensus of the Finance Committee on prorating. We're still trying to get some numbers ready for the twice a year, getting cost figures. So, I thought the easiest way to try and describe this prorating is to give you some examples on how we currently do it versus if we prorated, how would it look? The first example in front of you now is saying a person buys a vehicle on December first of twenty-twenty-two, so it's been last December. Currently, and the thing that's moving through this whole, how we do our personal property taxes, January first, that's the golden date, is if you own it on January first, you pay taxes for it in December. If you do not own it on January first, then you don't pay taxes that December. So, on this scenario, the person owned the vehicle on December first of twenty-twenty-two. So, when January rolls around, the current column, you'll see that they own the vehicle? Yes, they, that's a yes. If they own on January one, it goes down to line number two, will they pay taxes in December, twenty-twenty-three? Yes. Do they owe anything for twenty-twenty-two, because they purchased the vehicle in year twenty-twenty-two? The answer is no, currently, the way we do it, because once again, they did not own that vehicle on January first of twenty-twenty-two, and they did not own it. They did own it, I'm sorry, on January first of twenty-twenty-three, but twenty-twenty-two, they did not own the vehicle. If we were to go to the proration method, does a person own the vehicle on January one? Yes. Do they pay taxes in twenty-twenty-three? Yes, they would. Would they owe anything for twenty-twenty-two? Since they purchased the vehicle in twenty-twenty-two December, they would pay one month of tax for that vehicle. So, currently, right now, we don't charge them for that one month, but if we went to prorating, they would pay one month, or one twelfth of the tax for that year. Second example is one that a person buys a vehicle on January third. So, the person, do they own the vehicle on January first? They do not. So, do they pay taxes in December twenty-twenty-three? They would not, because they didn't own the vehicle on January first. Would they owe anything for January twenty, December of twenty-twenty-two? The answer would be no. So, the way we currently do it, if you buy your vehicle on that January of the following units, after December one, they do not pay any taxes. So, as I put at the bottom, that taxpayer is almost gone two years without paying taxes on that vehicle, the way we currently do it. If we were to go to prorating, go back to the question, do they own the vehicle on January one? They did not, because they got it on January third. Would they pay any taxes in December of twenty-twenty-three? The answer would be yes, they would pay twelve out of twelve months, they got it in the month of January. So, they would pay something in that fiscal year for owning that vehicle on January one. They, of course, would not owe anything for twenty-twenty-two, because they got the vehicle on January twenty-twenty-three. Last example, I guess, is one that's more realistic, because usually, when somebody gets a new vehicle, they're trading in, so they're getting rid of an old vehicle, and they get a new vehicle. So, this example is a person buys a new vehicle and trades in their old vehicle on May of twenty, I just picked May for an example. So, the way we currently, doing that current column, the person does not own the vehicle on January first, once again, imagine that, so they would not pay any taxes that year for the new vehicle. They would pay taxes for the old vehicle, though, because on January first, they hadn't traded their vehicle in yet, so they would pay on the old vehicle only. They, and most people trade up, so when they pay that last year, when they get rid of their vehicle, they're paying on the old vehicle, not the new one yet. So, when you get down to the fourth question, do they owe anything for the newly acquired vehicle? The answer is no, because they did not own the new vehicle on January first. If we go to prorating, does a person own the vehicle on January first? They own the old one, so yes, they do own, I should have put, yes, but they own the old vehicle, they haven't traded it in yet. Do they pay taxes in December? Yes. For proration, they're going to pay taxes twice. They're going to pay five months of taxes on the old vehicle, and they're going to pay seven months taxes on the new vehicle. So, once again, the way we currently do it, I think is a benefit to the taxpayer, that if you don't own it on January first, you do not pay anything. So, right now, I think that helps the taxpayer a lot. So, I think the Finance Committee came up with a recommendation, we want to stick with doing the, not doing prorating and leaving it once a year. So, I think, if I'm saying anything wrong, Mr. Jordan, let me know, but I think that was a decision of the Finance Committee.
That was, Mr. Chairman, that was correct, right? Supervisor Matthews?
I thought we were still going to continue to research the annual stuff.
Yes, sir. I want to bring back some more numbers for the cost.
Right, okay, yeah, we're good.
It's just information items.
Yes, sir. So, we don't need to do that, we currently do this right now.
That's correct for proration.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mascotta. Candy Administrator, I'm sorry, Candy Attorney Matters.
I actually have something.
Wait, but you need to Candy Attorney up.
No, not Candy Attorney, I thought you were, oh, Board Matters, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Now, Mr. Now.
I'm not running against you, Mr. Chairman, okay?
I'll get to you. Candy Administrator, I mean, Candy Administrator, report.
Yes, I only have a couple things for you tonight. In your packet, you should have had the, our water department received a Water Fluoridation Quality Award from U.S. Department of Health. So, we always like to, you know, recognize staff when they do a good job of receiving awards, so thanks to Mr. Queen, his department, on receiving this award for, for fluoride for the water system. Also, yes, an information item for you guys, before our next meeting, we have Local Legislative Day on January nineteenth, so I've been going to talk to our representatives, so if anything happened, and you all have any question when we take down the agenda, please let me know, and I'll get those, try to get those questions answered for you when we meet with our representatives after you guys.
Okay, thank you. Now, other Board Matters, Mr. Gillum.
Actually, after a very strenuous night, I have some good news to report from District Two. I'd like to talk about a resolution for a young lady in my district named Jenna Oliver. Jenna just won two thousand twenty-three Miss Agro Tourism Award. And what that is, is that introduces people in the regular section to agriculture. And she has been awarded this with a bunch of constituents. Jenna is a junior at Buckingham County High School. And I know we'll get into it, maybe if the Board would approve a resolution for her, but she has some mighty pair of grandparents, and parents and stepfather in District Two and Three, and I'd like to make a motion that we do a resolution for Jenna.
Get a second. A motion by Supervisor Gillum, second by Supervisor Davis, do a resolution for Miss?
Jenna Oliver.
Miss Oliver, Jenna Oliver. Are you ready to vote? Seven yes. All right, and other Board Members, other matters?
Yeah, I got one more thing. Part of the after-prom committee, we haven't had that for a few years right now, and I'm just wondering if it's all right to get the regular money, plus one year behind, pick it up, to make sure we get enough money to really do our after-prom this year, if you don't mind.
No problem. Does the motion?
I'll make a motion to get extra.
How much, how much money are you talking about?
Three thousand is normal, and then I'd just like to get one more three thousand from the past that I haven't got for a couple of years.
They didn't have it, they said.
Didn't have it.
We didn't have it, that's right. Really got the three thousand?
Ever since this COVID-nineteen, everything's been slowed down.
Okay. It been motion by Supervisor Allen, second by Supervisor Bryant, that we support the prom this year with three thousand, plus additional three thousand, after-party prom, right?
Yeah, with the additional three thousand.
All right. That's six thousand now, I would say. All in favor? Seven yes. We need to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would make, I would offer a motion that we enter into executive closed session with regards to consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. And that is Code of Virginia, section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven dot eight dot seven, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Allen, we go into executive session of Code of Red. All in favor?
Matthews. I'm sorry.
Seven yes.
[inaudible]
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Board of Supervisors return to regular session and certification, uh, to, to, that to which, that to the best of each member's knowledge, only business matters related to the Code of Virginia, which the executive meeting was convened, it was discussed or considered in the closed, um, executive session.
Motion by Supervisor Miles, talking about Supervisor Gillen, that nothing was discussed but pertaining to motion within executive session. There's no results after the closed session. If there's anything else, you need to come in for the board. I've adjourned the meeting.
Hold on, your mo. You got a vote? You got a vote?
Sorry, we voted.